...regular meeting of the Board of Education for the Southern York County School District. Please join us now in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call please?
Bruce Baumann.
Here.
Elizabeth Dolbermann.
Here.
Mary Lee Hall.
Here.
Samantha Hall.
Here.
James Holly.
Here.
Kelly Jarvis.
Here.
Robert Schechter.
Here.
Danielle Weaver Watts.
Here.
Thank you. Before we begin this evening, I do have to announce that we did have a Finance and Budget Committee Meeting on Tuesday, November fourteenth at six thirty P M. First item is approval of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second, any questions or discussion? Any nays or extensions? Motion carries. Next, we have minutes to approve from our last meeting on October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, plus October nineteenth Buildings and Grounds Committee Meeting and November fourteenth Finance and Budget Committee Meeting Minutes. I entertain a motion to approve those three sets of minutes together.
So moved.
So second.
Second.
Any discussion or changes? Any nays or extensions? That motion carries. Next for reports, we have Student Representative Report. Caroline cannot be with us this evening, so we have Mr. Devin Gilbert. How are you doing tonight, Devin?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. So what year are you in?
I'm a senior this year.
Senior, and what is your position on?
I'm the president.
Student Council President?
Yes.
Awesome. It's all yours.
So first up tomorrow is the opening night of the Fall Play, which is this year's Lost Girl, which is really just all about the story of when Wendy returned from Neverland. Tickets are available online still, I believe, at S H S leader dot com, and you can also buy them at the door. The show runs Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and this year Metal Shop teacher Tyler Martin really took on with the set building as well as a lot of the shop students, which is just great to have more students involved in the play this year. Moving on to the marching band, they ended up winning the season first place at their championship, which is the third year in a row. We're all very proud of them. And our Counseling Department Administrator Assistant Grace Myers has retired after nearly twenty-five years of service. There's a fantastic article about her and the career, I recommend you all check it out. Just this past week, Mr. Amberman, College and Career Counselor at the high school, organized a college and career fair. We had many different local colleges and organizations come out just for students to check out and to see what they might want to pursue for their future. We also have our orchestra performing with a regional band at Lebanon Valley, which is a great opportunity for them to perform with just a larger group and people outside of our high school. Today is also Children's Grief Awareness Day, and what we've done at the high school is just try to make people aware of grief, just that people around them may be struggling with grief too, and it's not necessarily an ending process, just so that people know that they aren't alone in their grief. And that's all I hope.
Thank you, Devin, well done. Thank you for being here. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations, five point zero one, our Glen Rock American Legion Riders are with us this evening. Let me turn over to Ms. Green to introduce them, please.
That's what we usually do, okay. Okay, so we are so excited to have the Glen Rock American Legion Riders back with us. They've come here a couple times to give us very generous donations, so they started the scholarship back in two thousand eighteen with the intent to endow it within ten years, but they came back in two thousand nineteen and were able to endow the entire scholarship, so very exciting. They then continued to add to the scholarship. It is currently sitting at eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars, and they will be presenting us with a check this evening for an additional thousand dollars, so that continues to build their endowment. So we are so excited to have them back again. They are very sad that they can't drive by and buzz as fast. And they wanted to come in the lobby, but we just didn't know about that. So here's Georgia. If we can have Mrs. Hall and Mr. Baumann come up, they are our board directors that are on the foundation.
Before you guys. Before you sneak out, on behalf of the entire board, I want to thank the Glen Rock American Legion Riders for their generous donation, not only this year, but in all the preceding years, and really to have that scholarship endowed is phenomenal. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Bill Laney the other evening, really got a sense of how proud they are of their scholarship, and I want to make sure you know that it's reciprocated and that the board and the foundation are just tremendously appreciate everything you do and we're proud and thankful to have you as part of our district. Thank you again. Item five point zero two, recognition of board treasurer, Mr. Bruce Baumann, for years of service by PSBA. I'll turn that over to Dr. Bryson, please.
Thank you, President Schechter. We'd like to welcome here this evening, representing PSBA, which is Pennsylvania School Boards Association, Ms. Jessica Ports.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Ports, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association to honor a school board director for his years of dedication to Southern York County School District. School board service has long been a crucial part of our nation's legacy and its commitment to public education. As the first school boards association in the United States, PSBA has a rich history with more than one hundred twenty-five years of service. School directors are described as ethical, principled individuals with a deep desire to serve. They believe in the value of our public schools and local control of public education for the benefit of all students. Today, school districts are expected to offer more services, along with world-class instruction with limited resources. These expectations provide a tremendous challenge for school directors, our unpaid volunteers who dedicate their time to the schools and communities they serve. For almost forty years, PSBA has been acknowledging the contributions of dedicated local school directors with long-term service. The honor role is the association's way of thanking those individuals who exemplify leadership by giving unselfishly of their time and talents for the betterment of the public schools, serving students across the Commonwealth. Before we honor Mr. Baumann, let's take a trip down memory lane to when he came into office. The year is nineteen ninety-nine. PayPal was called one of the worst business ideas of the year, Y two K had everyone in a panic, and Who Wants to be a Millionaire and SpongeBob SquarePants premiered on television. With all of that aside, I'm very pleased that I can be here tonight to recognize Mr. Bruce Baumann for twenty-four years of service to Southern York County. And thank you to everyone on the board for all of your years of service as well, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
I warned Mrs. Green she better get the timer out, because everybody knows how long I talk. I want to thank Ms. Ports and the PSBA for recognizing me in this way. This is very nice, very nice. And I also want to thank my fellow board members, all the members of the faculty, the student body, and administration that have helped me to understand the important issues. If I start to mention names, I'm sure to be guilty of all kinds of sins of omission, so I'm not going to do that. And I want to thank all the members of the community who have made a point of thanking me for serving and sharing their opinions with me. It's amazing how a kind word from someone in a social setting can really boost your spirits as a board director. And lastly, the lady over here that nobody recognizes, my wife Deb. She has to put up with my occasional rants on a Thursday night and my foul temper, maybe for a couple days afterwards, but thank you and I love you. People have often asked me why I wanted to serve as a school director, and at its root reason, it's not very complicated. Thomas Jefferson once said, "An educated citizenry is a vital requisite for our survival as a free people." To that end, he was a strong advocate of free public education for all our citizens. I hope in some small way I have helped to sustain that vision during my ten years as school director. Hey, that's it. Thank you, Bruce, and as you know, on behalf of the entire board, we thank you for your years of dedicated service. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you on the board for these many years. Really appreciate everything you've done. For me personally. Okay, five point zero three, appreciation of board directors. I'll turn that over to Dr. Bryson, please.
Thank you again. Bruce, I'll carry on since you were just recognized.
Okay, I'll yield my time.
Each of the four board directors here this evening that are at their last meeting, and I want to recognize each of you, starting with Bruce. Each has received a certificate of award. Southern York County School District, on behalf of the board, is school directors, administrators, faculty, staff, students, families, and the entire Southern York County community, recognize Bruce Baumann. This certificate is given in recognition for its outstanding contributions in the valued and essential roles of school board directors, and the school board treasurer in this case, and in support of the education of students within the Southern York County School District, as well as throughout the community it serves, from December nineteen ninety-nine through December twenty twenty-three, with special recognition in the area of school board leadership, serving with distinction, integrity, and genuine purpose on behalf of the overall betterment of the educational experience for each and every member of the Southern York County community. Thank you, Bruce. This certificate of award, the Southern York County School District, on behalf of the school directors, administrators, faculty, staff, students, families, and the entire Southern York County community, recognize Ms. Danielle Weaver Watts. This certificate is given in recognition for outstanding contributions in the valued and essential roles of the school board director and education committee chairperson, in support of the education of students within the Southern York County School District, as well as throughout the community it serves, from December twenty nineteen through December twenty twenty-three, with special recognition in the area of the school board, directorship, and committee leadership, serving with distinction, integrity, and for the overall betterment of the educational experience for each and every member of the Southern York County School District family. Thank you, Danielle. This certificate of award, the Southern York County School District, on behalf of the board of school directors, administrators, faculty, staff, students, families, and the entire Southern York County community, recognize Ms. Kelly Jarvis. This certificate is given in recognition for the outstanding contributions and the valued and essential roles as school board director and athletic and extracurricular committee chairperson, in support of the education of students within the Southern York County School District, as well as throughout the community it serves, from December twenty nineteen through December twenty twenty-three, with special recognition in the area of school board, directorship, and committee leadership, serving with distinction, integrity, and for the overall betterment of the educational experience for each and every member of the Southern York County School District. Thank you. And certainly last but not least, this certificate of award, the Southern York County School District, on behalf of the board of school directors, administrators, faculty, staff, students, families, and the entire Southern York County community, recognize Mr. Robert Schechter. This certificate is given in recognition for outstanding contributions in the valued and essential roles as a school board director and school board president, in support of the education of students within the Southern York County School District, as well as throughout the community it serves, from February seventh, two thousand two, through December seventh, twenty twenty-three, with special recognition in the area of school board leadership, serving with distinction, integrity, and for the betterment of the educational experience for each and every member of the Southern York County School District.
That's Dr. Baumann, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And thank you to my fellow board members who are in their last meeting as well. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, as well as everyone else on the board. I take a quick minute, I want to, like Bruce, I'm not going to get into names, but it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve this district over the past twenty-plus years. I'm full of gratitude to be able to serve with current administration and the past administrators, current board members, past school board members, staff, the public. I'm just extremely grateful to have had this opportunity, and like Bruce, I want to give a special thank you to my rock, the woman at home who sacrificed all the time that it took to serve on this board and held everything together, and again, listened to me and put up with me when I came home. So thank you, Nicole, for all of that. Any other board members?
I'm very humbled by this opportunity.
Thank you. Five point zero four, Dr. Len.
Thank you, President Schechter, School Board. Hello, everybody. Now that we are officially finally experiencing that fall weather, we're finally gearing up for that winter sports season. For all those that were able to come out last Friday night, we got a little bit of taste of that when the Southern Middle School and their PTSO sponsored and hosted the event of the Harlem Wizards against faculty and students. Amazing to see our talent, the team versus the Harlem Wizards. I know the score didn't turn out the way we expected to. I was carefully watching the score from the other side, and it does look like the Wizards were adding points to that scoreboard, so there is a recount there on those points. But it was an awesome time, great to see that entire gymnasium packed for yet another very, very successful event. Continuing my theme of safety, supportive, safe, supportive collaborative culture, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Pennsylvania State Police did complete the evening lighting surveys and the building assessments at all five buildings. We finished the last one a week ago, which was Shrewsbury Elementary. During these assessments, each police trooper sat down with the administration, including Mr. Buffington, Director of Operations, Mr. Dave Irman, District Mechanic, Officer Hanson, myself, Dr. Bryson, and Theo Mendez joined in each and every one of the actual building tours, as he was able to point out the specific safety measures that have been put in place. We will be receiving a report once it is completed. The state police did indicate that it is a confidential report. Only one report will be provided to the district safety and security coordinator, and the information specific to the reports will be disseminated to the buildings, as well as the administrators, as we take a look at, you know, what are some of the recommendations that they're making. Regarding supportive part, I wanted to thank all the veterans at this time for their service, for our country, and if anybody here at this time has served our country, can you please stand up now to be recognized? I wanted to congratulate the Siskiyou High School marching band, which Devin talked about earlier, finished first in the Cavalcade Band Championship on November fourth. Thank to all the parents and the students that were there to cheer on our Warriors that had received the first place for the third year in a row. Thank you to the band directors and volunteers that make that magic happen again. On a personal note, yes, I was there to represent Southern York County School District. My children played in Red Line, they were in a different division, they also had first place, so it was a great personal and professional finish to the band season. Under collaboration, congratulations goes out to the school district for awarding the Farm to School Grant. This will provide an opportunity to add hydroponics growing systems at each of our schools, and the staff and students will be able to produce items such as lettuce to be utilized in our schools. Kudos to the administration and the staff who assisted in the submission of this grant. I wanted to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Brooke Lizinski, who's the autistic support teacher at Southern Elementary, and Mr. Mike Arnold, who's a math teacher at Southern Middle School, who were recognized yesterday, November fifteenth, at Shippensburg University's Annual Student Study Council Teacher of the Year. It was a great time to spend, opportunity with them and their spouses, and their building administrators, so in their recognition. And though Brooke and Mike were specifically recognized by Shippensburg University, I wanted to say to all of our teachers out there that you should continue to be recognized for your outstanding student-centered teaching, because we do have amazing teachers in Southern York County School District. So final reminders, Devin also pointed out about Lost Girls, which will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Get your tickets, they're going fast, and it'll be awesome to see that show in the new auditorium. Thanksgiving break begins next Wednesday through Monday, the twenty-seventh, and school will resume back on the twenty-eighth. Siskiyou High School's National Honor Society induction will be on Tuesday, December fifth, at six P M., and a sixth grade orchestra concert, band and orchestra concert is Wednesday, December sixth, in the middle school auditorium, and a happy special early birthday to school board director, Mary Lee Hall, which is coming up. And last thing, have a great Thanksgiving break, or not, choice is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Repper. Five point zero five, Siskiyou High School Building Project Video. Thank you. Next, we have public comment. We have two people signed up. First, Captain John Smith. Second, Elizabeth Arpin. Come up to the podium, Captain Jack. You have five minutes, you'll be given a warning after four minutes.
Not that long, Wendy, Bob. I came here this evening, ladies and gentlemen, in case anybody doesn't know who I am, I'm the commander of the VFW in New Freedom. I'm also an employee of the Southern York County School District. I've gained help for most of the sporting events, I do timing. I spent twenty-two years in the P I double A and twenty-two years down in Maryland, part of the Maryland Board of Football Officials and the Mason Dixon Power Association. My reason for being here this evening is to thank all the school board members that are leaving. I really appreciate your service. who are running on the board. There's some big proposals still, some more stuff that could affect taxpayers. I just hope that that was really true, and just think of the taxpayers before you make any more fiscal decisions before your last time you're here on the board, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Next, we have the consent agenda, item 7.01 through 7.08 for consideration. Is there any item to be pulled out for separate consideration? If not, I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Any nays or abstentions that motion carries? Thank you. Moving into our committee reports, education, Ms. Weaver Watts, please.
Thank you very much. 8.01, Southern York County School District Health and Safety Plan for the 2023-2024 school year. The Board of Education to consider approval of the proposed revisions to the Southern York County School District Health and Safety Plan for the 2023-2024 school year. A federal funding requirement is that the Health and Safety Plan be reviewed by the Board at least every six months. Dr. Repert, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Thank you, Danielle Weaver Watts. Yes, as we took a look at the Health and Safety Plan, there's several components that we did remove from the Health and Safety Plan based on those items no longer being able to be utilized, such as social distancing, sharing of equipment, the monitoring of the symptoms throughout the day, which includes isolation, and then there's another component specifically related to social distancing within there that were no longer applicable to the Health and Safety Plan. As Danielle Weaver Watts indicated, we are to review this every six months. We should have brought that to the Board last May, based on the six-month rotation. We did bring it in June for it to be reviewed and approved, but by us reviewing it today and approving it today, we're back on that cycle. We'll have one more approval in May of 2024, which will be the final because the Easter funding does end in September of 2024.
Thank you very much. After reviewing the attached documents, I am going to make a motion to approve the proposed revisions to the Southern York County School District Health and Safety Plan for the 2023-2024 school year. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion or questions?
Yes, I'd like to open discussion, please. So, first, I appreciate all of the amendments that have been made on to the plan. They are great, and thank you very much, the administration, for doing that. I do have one last concern, and that would be on the grid for strategies, policies, and procedures under Item A, which is the universal incorrect wearing of masks. It states currently, the Southern York County School District will follow any state or federal mandate or order for mask wearing in schools and on buses. Absent a state or federal mandate or order, mask wearing will be optional. So, I'd like to propose we take the wording of "will follow" and replace that with "will take under advisement" in relation to what we've learned since the pandemic, what was correct, what wasn't. I think that it's important to bring that flexibility to this plan that will allow families to exact what they are comfortable doing with their families and their children in regards to their health care from mask wearing.
Any comments from any other board members?
I just wondered if the plan should be tabled until the next time because this does affect the incoming board coming in and, you know, it will be part of their tenure. So, I'm just changing it or tabling it would be the question.
Any comments for any other board members?
My only concern with tabling it would be what Dr. Repert said about this getting a stack on course for that six-month review.
Is there any negative effect since we did it in June this past year, just in terms of if we were a month behind? The crazy thing about this is that our next school board meeting is in three weeks, so it's not the normal cycle because of the organization being earlier in the month. So, it's really just a three-week.
My only question would be how many things are we going to table? I mean, are we going to go through this whole agenda and table everything, or are we actually going to do so?
I don't speak to the one we're on right now. I can only say that...
I know, I'm just pointing, like, yeah. I mean, I'm not saying go through and go with it, I'm just asking if we're going to table everything.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second. We can go forward with a roll call vote and see where that lands us if we want to. If anyone wants to disagree, they can definitely say nay, and that can take them until the next meeting, or we can move forward. Is that kind of the plan? Can you do a roll call vote?
Mary Lee Hall?
Not without recommend, not without the amending verbiage.
Samantha Hall?
Nay.
James Hawley?
Yes.
Kelly Darvis?
Yep.
Robert Schechter?
Yes.
Danielle Weaver Watts?
Yes.
Bruce Baumann?
Yes.
And Liz Dolverman?
Yes.
Can we get a final?
Carries.
Six to two.
Motion carries. 8.02, first quarter discipline data from Dr. Repert. The Board, this is for information only, the Board of Education to receive first quarter discipline data from Dr. Repert. Dr. Repert, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, School Board. We are now kicking off the first year, first marking period as we started last year. We actually did first and second marking periods last year in a combination when we're taking a look at the discipline. So, our main focus as we looked at last year is identify the state reportable discipline incidents or infractions that would be on the, on the, hold on for a second, State Schools Report, thank you. So, as we go through this, there's something else I wanted to point out. Last year, there were some changes regarding state reporting of discipline. So, if you take a look at the C under the Infraction Code, under Student Code of Conduct, where the change occurred starting in the 2022-2023 school year is anytime there is a consequence that's assigned to a student, an action code of a detention or an in-school suspension, an out-of-school suspension, or an expulsion, they automatically are included in the state report for Code of Conduct. So, the reason why I bring that up is you could have a student that is late to class and be assigned a detention, and if they're assigned a detention, a deten, being late to class is not a state reportable code, but the sanction is, which is a detention. So, where we're going to see higher numbers in the Student Code of Conduct is because any other, any other conduct behavior that is assigned to detention would include, would now be included not only in the upper section under Student Code of Conduct where you see 150, 166, but then down in the bottom where you see your detentions, there's 149. So, those 149 detentions have been assigned for late to class, escaping class, failure to assign detention, misuse of pass, which are not state reportable codes, which is your violations that you see up at the top, but because there are detentions, it's now linked to the state report. So, as we look at 2022, 2023, and then the start of this school year, when we're comparing data, it's really, we're comparing apples to apples these two years because the change of the reporting of data that went to the state now includes another component. So, I did want to share that because we were building this kind of in the, this airplane in the air last year, and as we're coming across different ways to be transparent and show a comprehensive look at what is the discipline within our district, now that component is also included. So, I did want to share with that. So, our numbers are going to look higher than they may have done in previous years, but that's specific to the way it's now being reported to the state. And that will be reflected in this year's or last year's report, State Schools Report, from this point on, as we're looking at coding. So, there are, there have been issues that, you know, have been brought to the attention of the administration that they have addressed regarding sexual harassment, racial, ethnic intimidation, the other forms of harassment, which may have fell through the discrimination, Title IX, and, yeah, you know, I'm wrong with that. Yeah, the discrimination, Title IX, and harassment, you know, so those, those forms are being completed. The threats, when you look at threatening official or a school official or student, we are having those threat assessments also, which is something that is board policy, that anytime there is that threat, we're going through that process to determine whether it is a transient, something that a student made, he really didn't mean, or she didn't mean to make that comment, or is it something that was more serious that we had to address? But all that documentation, yes, it's an extra step for our administrators to go through, but what it's doing is it's starting to provide us with details based on our students and providing them the supports that they need in case, you know, there's situations that we could help prevent, potentially prevent in the future. So, I'll continue to provide an update to the Board. The next board, next update will be in February, which then we'll do a comparison of the first and second marking period for this year, but then I'll also bring back the data from last year's first and second marking period combination so that we can start to look at the comparison from last year to this year under the changes based on the discipline that's being reported. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Repert. 8.03, update from Dr. Hughes on the science request for proposal. The Board of Education, this is for information only, the Board of Education to receive an update from Dr. Hughes on the science request for proposal.
Hi, Dr. Hughes, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Mind if I kick things off?
Sure.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. What we're going to be reviewing today is the adoption of the new science program K through eight. Over the past few years, we've had programs that we have brought to the Board under the leadership of Dr. Hughes, math and ELA being specific, based on the new standards that our students are faced with and what they have to, you know, meet those standards of learning. We've now have the programs in place through the training that are provided to our teachers so that we can be successful, and now science being an assessed area is that third area. So, what Dr. Hughes and I will be doing is reviewing the process for selecting the program based on the, based on the RFP process, where we've reached out for proposals from different companies to see which would be the best match based on the feedback from our teachers. So, what we really need to do is determine what are the needs of science. You know, science just doesn't start at the tested areas, which once was in fourth grade, eighth grade for the PSSAs and in the biology at the high school. Now, that, that has changed. Now, based on the new standards, that the elementary will now be testing science in fifth grade and still in eighth grade for the PSSA. So, this gives us an opportunity now, you look at those bands of testing, you know, we needed to find what's going to be best for K2, grades three through five, which is that assessed area, but then also grades six through eight. We are a seven, eight district, you know, with, at the middle school level, but that grade six through eight is important because that's the testing band, the standards that they're going to be focusing on.
So, as we started, we started by looking at the standards, at the new steel standards and the grade bands. So, we started this RFP process by bringing it to you in the spring of last year. We had a timeline put out forward for the RFP process. We were, the bid went out, and we had nine companies that actually came back and gave us a bid. Well, in that process, we have to wait until all the bids come in before we can start evaluating the systems. So, our bids came in, we had our date set for our teachers to come in over the summer. We were going to go through and vet up of our programs, so that would keep us on track with our timetables. We know that the test for our students in fifth grade starts in '25-'26, and the test for our eighth grade starts in '25-'26. That's important because we have students that are going to be tested in three years that have to start working with the steel standards now. So, our teachers, they've been working very hard, they've been looking at those steel standards, they've been trying to get information and kind of go through. Well, then, we had our weather event that happened, and the weather event prevented us from being able to bring those teachers in over that week that we were having them come in. Then, school started. So, I have to tell you, I was very, very impressed with our teacher group. They came after school for a week straight, for two weeks, actually. They came after school, they vetted the programs. We sat down with people from every grade level, level at the elementary level, middle school representation, and high school representation, came to each one of those meetings to help us vet through the materials.
board under the leadership of Dr. Hughes, math and ELA being specific, uh, based on the new standards that our students are faced with and what they have to, you know, meet those standards of learning. Uh, we've now have the programs in place through the training that are provided to our teachers so that we can be successful, and now science being an assessed area is that third area. So what Dr. Hughes and I will be doing is reviewing the process for selecting the program based on the, uh, based on the RFP process, where the, where we've reached out for repo- uh, proposals from different companies to see which would be the best match based on the feedback from our teachers. So what we really need to do is determine what are the needs of science. You know, science just doesn't start at the tested areas, uh, which once was in fourth grade, eighth grade for the PSSAs and in the biology at the high school. Now that, uh, that has changed. Now, based on the new standards that the elementary will now be testing science in fifth grade and still in eighth grade for the PSSA. So this gives us an opportunity now, you look at those bands of testing, you know, we needed to find what's going to be best for K two, grades three through five, which is that assessed area, but then also grades six through eight. We are a seven, eight district, you know, with, with, at the middle school level, uh, but that grade six through eight is important because that's the testing band, the standards that they're, uh, going to be focusing on.
So as we started, we started by looking at the standards, at the new steel standards and the grade bands. So we started this RFP process by bringing it to you at, in the spring of last year. We had a timeline put out forward for the RFP process. We were, um, the bid went out and we had nine companies that actually came back and gave us a bid. Well, in that process, we have to wait until all the bids come in before we can start evaluating the systems. So our bids came in, we had our date set for our teachers to come in over the summer. We were going to go through and vet up of our programs, so that would keep us on track with our timetables. We know that the test for our students in fifth grade starts in twenty-five, twenty-six, and the test for our eighth grade starts in twenty-five, twenty-six. That's important because we have students that are going to be tested in three years that have to start working with the steel standards now. So our teachers, they've been working very hard, they've been looking at those steel standards, they've been trying to get information and kind of go through. Well, then we had, um, our weather event that happened, and the weather event prevented us from being able to bring those teachers in over that week that we were having them come in. Then school started. So I have to tell you, I was very, very impressed with our teacher group. They came after school for a week straight, for two weeks, actually. They came after school, they vetted the programs. We sat down with people from every grade level, level at the elementary level, middle school representation, and high school representation, came to each one of those meetings to help us vet through the materials. So as we were going through, we had nine programs to vet. A couple of them right off the bat, we were like, these don't meet our needs. And I have to tell you, I was also very proud of our teachers because they were also looking to be fiscally responsible as we went through this process. We had one program that they loved, but you'll see in a few minutes, the cost effectiveness of it, it was almost eight hundred thousand dollars, and we said, there's no way. It is not cost effective for us to go with that program. So we identified the vendors we went through. They used two different scoring guides. So this group went through and looked at it from a curricular standpoint, they scored the materials, it was done by every single individual by elementary K through eight, and also our high school scored the programs. Then they did a deep dive into the program. They then did another scoring tool that had to be done for the RFP. So this goes back and makes sure fiscally the, um, we had the assigned cost points to it, we had to go through and really look at the teacher components, online components, so they did this whole process. So we came down and said, there are two that bubbled automatically to the top that were our top choices. Discovery Education and Aqua Phoenix, which is a local business that we've worked with in the past that will help us create the kits for open science education. Now, Discovery Education was a, a little bit of an interesting thing because not only did we have this whole group go through it, we said, we need to make sure every teacher in every grade level has an opportunity to go through all of the resources. So we scheduled meetings every morning at each one of our buildings where the teachers in each grade level came in, they sorted through it, they went through the different resources, they identified, how will this help us, how will this not? I have to say that Discovery Ed is part of the program that we're currently using. So we use something called Mystery Science that we've been using since, uh, way, way before COVID. And one of the things during that time period is that I had a lot of my primary teachers come back and say, Kim, we really like Discovery Ed, but for what we need for our kids, we're good with Mystery Science. It wasn't until we hit third grade through fifth grade that they said, we don't have quite enough resources. The materials in Mystery Science are great, the kids love it, but it's not enough hands-on. And that's really the difference with the steel standards, is that it's really about exploring information and getting kids to come up with hypotheses and then try them out. So we identified that we really wanted to go for our elementary K through, um, fifth grade, they are Mystery Science for K two, Discovery Ed and Mystery Science for three, five, and then the Open Sci Ed and Aqua Phoenix. The Open Sci Ed and Aqua Phoenix is a very interesting combination because it is an online curriculum that is open to anyone. Any parent is able to sign up for an account and go through it. It has been vetted by many different people, there have been scientists behind this, we've gone through each one of the different pieces. Um, I, we really have been, we are two months behind, and my teachers keep coming and saying, Kim, is it going to be at the board? We need resources, we need materials. And that's where we're looking just to make sure that we have things in place by twenty-five, twenty-six to make sure each one of these test, um, areas, that the kids have the opportunities to explore. Um, we do know that our FAW materials that we've been kind, kind of working with and subsidizing in, they're not giving us what we need because they're not written to the new standards. So as you, we went through, we, um, did make the choice, these were the three programs that we decided to go with, cost of the programs. So when you look at the first cost, this, the first one is for Mystery Science and Discovery Education, and it's two hundred and one, seven, twenty-six. That's a little bit, it's for six years, it's a little deceiving though, because we're already paying for Mystery Science, we've already been purchasing them. So while we do have an additional cost, it's divided out over those seven years, and the positive thing behind this is that because we went through an RFP process, we had to wait another month to come to the board because we were working with them, they give us a deal that is the same deal that we could get through our LIU, which is special pricing, they're going to do just for us, and they freeze it there. So it will not go up in that time period. Same thing with Discovery Education. It's thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, which is for the hard, non-consumable materials. The only thing we're paying for, and a benefit to this, is that we're using EASR grant funds to pay for a lot of this upfront cost. What we're paying for is the year after year, the consumable cost, which we have to do. And when you go to Walmart, you know, a lot of the stuff are things we could get from Walmart, but our teachers are taking hours going, do they have it? Do they have enough of white vinegar, sugar? So that's where we are looking at having these kits come in so that they're already prepared for our teachers. Um, so really, we have a increase, like it's about a five to eleven thousand for our sixth through eighth grade, and then our elementary, we do have an increase there because of the three through five program that we're looking. But once again, what we will be paying for are the consumable things, and we will also, we've talked to them to make sure, if we have things left over and we don't need to buy, we're not committed to say, you have to buy ten of this, we could buy four or five. So that's where we're trying to work through this and make sure that we're being fiscally responsible with making sure we're moving forward and our kids have these opportunities. This is a breakdown a little bit more, you can see exactly how much we're looking at using EASR funds. So this is for our elementary program, and then you can see how much it is for each one of those pieces as we go through. And then for our Aqua Phoenix, Open Sci Ed. And once again, we have, um, it's those consumable costs that keep going through every year. Okay, and just to kind of be a reminder, so that the grade band is that K through five with fifth grade testing in twenty-five, twenty-six, six through eight testing twenty-five, twenty-six. We have professional development that we're looking at trying to start scheduling in the spring for our elementary. We've already been working with our middle and high school teachers with the new steel standards. Um, thank you, Board, for letting us work through that over the summer some. And then, um, the other thing is, we were told the contract that they gave us is only good until the end of December, so if it's after that, the cost goes up, and they can't, um, hold it with what we are because they're actually negotiating, everything's going up. So they're negotiating with the LIU right now for the new cost, so we're really trying to get in because we know that will save us and keep us there for six years. So.
And the other thing I wanted to say, Kim, thank you for sharing that information, is just the excitement of the teachers, uh, as I mentioned, uh, just about every month, getting in the classrooms and seeing what the teachers are doing. You know, I'm a year and a month removed from a, from the middle school's principal, but seeing what they've been doing, as Kim was saying, with the steel standards, that inquiry base, that the, the questioning that the teachers, and we're talking to veteran teachers that I had worked with for years, where it has changed their mindset of what they're doing in the classroom, which has changed the mindset of what our students are doing in the classroom, um, which is just amazing. And we always talk about the standard, standards, well, in, in education, we have to focus on those standards. The standards are where we need to get our students to, and now that the science has now changed, or is, is changing, uh, this is one area that we want to make sure we're providing our teachers with the resources that are going to help those students meet and exceed the expectations that we know they can related to science. Any questions?
Does it look like we have any questions? I want to thank you both so very much. I know this has been an extensive process, the fact that, you know, you guys have researched this, and just the collaboration aspect. I mean, you said how the teachers are excited, they have even commented to myself about how excited they are for this program and can't wait for it to get started and hopefully be able to get that. So thank you so much for all your hard work, I appreciate it.
All right, eight point zero four, science curriculum request proposal for grades K through five, the Board of Education to consider awarding the science curriculum request for proposal for grades K through five to Discovery Education at a cost of two hundred and one thousand dollars, seven hu- or two thousand, I'm sorry, two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents for six years, partially funded by ESAR. I am going to move forward with making a motion to award the science curriculum request for proposal for grades K through five to Discovery Education at a total cost of two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents for six years, partially funded by ESAR. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, eight point zero five, science curriculum request proposal for grades six through eight, the Board of Education to consider awarding the science curriculum request for proposal for grades six to eight to Aqua Phoenix Scientific at a cost of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year funded by ESAR. I'm going to make a motion to award the science curriculum request for proposal for grades six through eight to Aqua Phoenix Scientific at a cost of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year funded by ESAR. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. Eight point zero six, Marzano's Resources Agreement. The Board of Education to consider approval of an agreement between Marzano's Resources and Southern York County School District for Certification and Professional Development in High Reliability Schools Level Two, Effective Teaching in Every Classroom at a Total Cost of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to be funded using a combination of ESAR and district funds. We've been talking about this in the last couple of board meetings, so it all should be fresh in everyone's mind. I don't know, there was attachments, hopefully everybody got a chance to read the attachments. Dr. Repert, is there anything you want to add to this before I get moved forward?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. You know, one of the areas of focus, uh, little model that Dr. Bryson was using this year, it's kind of expanded on the Level Two that we use with our staff, effective teaching in every classroom, every day. And I think that is, you know, we need to make sure we're doing, uh, putting the best in front of our students each and every day, and how do we do that is through continuous professional development. Not, what they learn in college is one thing in the preparation, but it's through the collaboration and professional development that we've been afforded, and I got to thank the Board, as Dr. Hughes did, for giving that, uh, those opportunities, provide our staff with those opportunities so that they can do what's best, the research, uh, research best practices in the classroom, and then giving them that opportunity to really collaborate and work with one another. Uh, we've been very successful with the rollout of our Level One, safe, supportive, and collaborative culture, and that's something we're going to continue to maintain, you know, as we continue to, to move on. Uh, but this Level Two then is now another focus where the Marzano Group will provide each of our administration, each of our buildings, uh, the opportunity to really showcase what they've done, but also give a lot of feedback so that we're assuring that we're providing effective teaching in every classroom, as Dr. Bryson said, every day. So this is something that, as we go through this school year, we will have schools that will start that process, and some already have, but officially start that process to be certified. And please keep in mind, School Board, by giving us the opportunity to move into Marzano several years ago, uh, we already have one school that's certified, the first in the state of Pennsylvania. Little, uh, Little Bernie told me, we do have a second school that just completed their certification, and I was, and was shared with me that our other three schools have submitted for feedback, and we're looking for them to be certified in Level One in Marzano, which would then say the Southern York County School District will be the first school district in the state of Pennsylvania that is certified in Level One, and that goes within a registry where, uh, it's, it's a lot that our district can be proud of. But this is then that next step where we got a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture that we're working on and will continue to, but now that effective teaching in every classroom, every day.
Thank you. I am going to make a motion to approve an agreement between Marzano's Resources and Southern York County School District for Certification and Professional Development in High Reliability Schools Level Two, Effective Teaching in Every Classroom at a Total Cost of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to be funded using a combination of ESARs and district funds. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. Eight point zero seven, agreement with EDU Planet Twenty-One. The Board of Education to consider approval of an agreement with EDU Planet Twenty-One for additional licenses for curriculum mapping, online courses at a cost of three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to read those attachments and review them. I am going to make a motion to approve an agreement with EDU Planet Twenty-One for additional licenses for curriculum mapping, online courses at a cost of three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. Eight point zero eight, Keystone Testing Schedule, Winter Twenty Twenty Three. This is for information only, Dr. Repert?
Yes, uh, thank you for sharing, uh, for asking, because I was going to interject. So the testing schedule for the Keystone, uh, is for information only. Uh, there was one just recent, recent modification done to it where we did speak with the Department of Education for the Middle School. Uh, we have three students that are retaking the Keystone, but on Tuesday, uh, December twelfth is yes day. Uh, so we got JA that's coming into the middle school. Uh, so we requested with, uh, DRC, you know, they're, they're in charge of the assessment, through PDE, that we move that to the thirteenth and the fourteenth. Uh, there was just a oversight win in scheduling that was just brought to my attention, so we wanted to make sure those students had the opportunity to participate in junior achievement, uh, yes activities. So that is one change, but the parents, that has been communicated to the parents of the students that would be taking the assessment.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions on that item? Eight point zero nine, speakers approved through the vetting process, this is for information only, the Board of Education to be informed that the following speaker has been approved through the vetting process, junior achievement of South Central PA to conduct their yes, Your Economic Success Program at Southern Middle School on December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three at no cost to the district. Eight point ten, textbook adoption. All right, the Board of Education to consider approval of the following French textbook, De Accord, Vista Higher Learning, copyright twenty-twenty-four, grades nine through twelve. Uh, you could see we went through a, an advanced vetting process for this French book, it was quite, um, an enjoyable read, it took me back quite a few years, so, hmm, it's a good time. Uh, I am going to make a motion to approve the following French textbook, De Accord, Vista Higher Learning, copyright twenty-twenty-four, grades nine through twelve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. Eight point eleven, stage one curricular, curriculum maps as district-wide master maps. Had all three of them here. All right, the Board of Education to consider approval of the following stage one curriculum maps as district-wide master maps, this will be one. Maps as District-Wide Master Maps. This would be one, science, which is kindergarten. The second one is science grade 1. The third is science grade 2. All of these were attached. And again, this format looked a little bit differently. We talked about that in previous meetings, that we're going to be seeing this new format with the district maps. So, hopefully everybody had a chance to kind of go through each one of them. I am going to make a motion to approve the following Stage 1 Curriculum Maps as District-Wide Master Maps. That would be science for kindergarten, science for grade 1, and science for grade 2. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. 8.12, ProCare Therapy LLC Contract. The Board of Education to Consider Approval of a Contract for Virtual Speech and Language Services between ProCare Therapy LLC and Southern York County School District. Again, this information was for our attachment. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to read it. I am going to make a motion to approve a contract for virtual speech and language services between ProCare Therapy LLC and Southern York County School District. Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. That concludes the educational report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver-Watt. Finance and Budget, Mr. Bowman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item is the Treasuries Report for the month of October. General Fund Concentration Account started the month with a balance of approximately $30,085,000. There were deposits of approximately $1,497,000, dispersments of approximately $5,273,000, which left the balance in the concentration account at the end of October of $26,310,70.80. The tax collector accounts finished the month with a balance of approximately $256,000. Investment account started the month with a balance of approximately $3,723,000. The net of interest, purchases, deposits, maturities, and redemptions increased the value of the investment account by approximately $2,016,000, which left the balance at the end of the month in the investment account of $33,739,595.93. And the balance of the report shows the portfolio of investments in the investment account. Are there any questions about the Treasuries Report? The next item is Review of Bills for Payment. We received a comprehensive list in board docs. I have looked through that. Hopefully, others have. I will make a motion that the bills be presented in that document. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries. Exonerations and refunds. We have one exoneration, well, actually, two exonerations, but they're to the same entity. And exonerations total $10,458. And then refunds, we have total refunds of approximately $2,574. I would make a motion that they both be approved as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Nays or abstentions? That motion carries. 9.04 is the informational tax collection report, and 9.05 is the informational budget status report. Are there any questions on either of those reports? Okay, we have no budgetary transfers. 9.07, again, is for information. That's the cafeteria report. Any questions on the cafeteria report? And now, the spotlight's going to shine on Mrs. Green to give us an update on the 2024-2025 budget.
So, I'm just going to give a brief update. As was stated earlier, the budget and finance meeting was on Tuesday evening, and we gave a detailed presentation on the preliminary 2024-25 budget. Very preliminary, since we're just starting the school year here. So, the main purpose of the preliminary budget presentation is to make a recommendation if we are able to stay within the PDE index for 24-25, which is 6.7%. So, the administration is making the recommendation that it is possible to stay within the index and is recommending approval of that required resolution at the December 7th board meeting. Also, wanted to point out that the state budget, although our basic education, special education, and transportation, and those types of subsidies are flowing, there still is no fiscal school code. So, there are certain areas that are not moving forward with the budget still, and what we're hearing is there does not appear to be any movement on that. They're, they're pretty much stalled out on passing anything. So, as we talked about Tuesday night, there are some programs that are impacted by that. So, that's all I had unless there's any other questions on the presentation. And it is on our website if folks missed that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Green. 9.09 is a subject we've discussed in the past related to having to do a redesign of our website, or having the opportunity probably is a better way of saying it, of doing a redesign on our website, because the current company that we have that with has been absorbed by another company who can't support the existing format. And a fair amount of work has been done on figuring out ways to improve the website. There was a survey done of all the different users. So, on that note, I would like to make a motion to approve a work order from Active Internet Technologies for a web, website design customization package for the district's new website at a one-time cost of $5,000 in response to needs identified in the October 2023 survey. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mrs. Green, do you have any, anything you want to add?
We were going to make a short presentation, if that's okay, on the results of the website.
That's fine.
So, I just want to introduce Mrs. Owannowitz. This is Christina. She's going, she did a lot of the work behind the website and the survey. As Mr. Bowman pointed out, we had, we had no choice but to look at a different website. At that time, there were, there were basic pieces that were necessary. One of the main other reasons besides the company no longer supporting the website is there's accessibility changes that we're required to comply with. So, those are the two pieces that we were really looking at as we went through this. So, I'm going to have Christina go through some of the results from the survey.
Do you do this?
Oh, okay.
Got it. So, first, I just want to say thank you to everybody, both the staff and the community who took the time to complete the survey. We really worked to make it a short and concise and focused survey, but it took time for everyone to respond and received a lot of very detailed responses about what people liked about the website and improvements that they were interested in seeing. And while we may not be able to incorporate every one of those suggestions, we're certainly working to include as many of them as possible. So, the survey went out on October 12th, and it was open for one week. And during that time, we received about 300 responses from the community and 136 responses from staff. We did not survey students at this time, but we will be seeking student input later when we get to the really student-centered portions of the website. So, when we're talking about things like the student portal and some of the pages that we know that the students are really frequently using. So, the first question asked on the survey was, how do you access the district's website? And we found from this that the majority of staff use desktops or laptops, and the majority of parents use mobile devices. But there's really a lot of crossover there between the groups. And so, this was really important information for us to have, because the website designs do change. So, if you are looking at our website on a desktop, and then you look at the design on a mobile device, by its nature, it's going to change. The layout is going to change. But we need to ensure that whichever design we end up with, that the features that our users identified as the most important and their priorities are easily accessible on both types of devices. So, to that end, we asked users what information they were seeking when they were visiting the site. And as you can see, it was really six areas that came back time and again from both staff and from parents. School calendars, student information systems, particularly, particularly Sapphire, cafeteria menus, the staff directory, athletic information, and district news. And again, important information for us to have, because we want to make sure that those are in really prominent locations from our homepage and easy to access for users. We asked users about their preferences for the type of communication and information they receive. So, as you can see on the left of this slide, emails and texts particularly are popular forms of general communication, but there's also a significant number of users who like the website or phone calls for information. And as you can see on the right, when it comes to topics of interest, the majority of both our staff and community members are looking for information about the accomplishments and the achievements of our students and our schools. So, again, important information for us, because particularly when we look at the website design, we want to make sure that whatever design we end up with allows us with enough space and ample locate, like ample space in a prominent location for posting a lot of those wonderful achievements that are happening in our schools. And finally, we asked two open-ended questions. We asked what areas of our website users had difficulty accessing, and also what improvements they would like to see, and really received very similar responses to both of those questions and from both groups of respondents. Improved mobile layout and improved search function, easier calendar accessibility, those were the top three from both staff and parents. Staff also requested easier access to the staff and student portal, and parents requested easier access to the staff directory, consistency between the school webpages, and more school news and events. So, from those survey results, we're making a number of recommendations for the redesign. So, first, quick access to the most used features, so clear links and buttons in prominent locations. Here, we're probably talking about, if you're looking at our homepage, the top right-hand quadrant for a lot of those buttons. Not every design gives us that ability, and not every design gives us the same number of buttons, but we feel like this is really a priority based on what we're hearing from our users. Easier access to other pages. So, pages here, we're talking about things like student enrollment, volunteer information, things that maybe aren't used as frequently as the calendars, the cafeteria menus, or the contact information, but information that users need to be able to access. So, they still need to be, you're not going to fit everything in that top of the, of the website, but it needs to be easy to access and to find as well. Updated calendars, as we talked about, and we're looking, recommending a design that has an improved calendar layout with easy-to-update features for staff and a consistency across the buildings. Mobile-friendly layout, again, selection of a design that enables easy and clear navigation regardless of the type of device you're using for the website, and robust school news and events, a selection of a design that provides us with the ability to post and highlight multiple events and news items from around the district.
So, I want to commend Christina for the extensive work that she's done on looking at our different options and how we can make sure that our website meets the needs of our stakeholders as we walk through it. She was very patient in explaining, and then re-explaining, and then explaining to me again why these things are important and how the layout makes such a big deal on, on how people can access it more easily. So, she's definitely the expert here. So, one of the things as we're working through this, when we were working with Final Site in the spring there, there were basically a basic option, which is what we brought forth to the board, or an extremely expensive option, which we didn't even consider, $20,000, $50,000, $70,000. We weren't, we knew that that was not something we were even going to consider due to the extreme cost. As they're working through this process, they are having other options come forth. So, we were content with, we were going to move forward with the, with the basic option. They've now brought forth another option, which is the option we're bringing this evening. It does allow us to have more accessibility. We really worked through in depth on whether or not we would bring this recommendation. But one of the things that, as we were working through it, when we put the website together, and this is where her expertise comes in, we need, whatever our layout is, is our layout. So, we have a five-year contract with the company. That is the layout we will have. If we extend with that company for another five years, that is the layout we will have. It will not, we will not be able to change it, because I'm like, oh, well, let's try the basic, and then, you know, if it's not quite working, maybe a year from now, we can, we can change that. And she, she schooled me on, no, it doesn't really work that way. So, as we were working through it, we looked at the $5,000, and we don't take that lightly. But over five years, that would be $1,000 a year. And if, if it means accessibility and ability for folks to find more easily what they need, we think it is important. If we keep the website for 10 years, of course, that goes down to $500. It is a one-time cost and is not a reoccurring cost. So, as we worked through it, we know that this is very important to our stakeholders, and that's why we're bringing forth this recommendation to allow that mobile piece. So, if you think of our website now, and I'm trying to explain it in layman's terms a little bit, if you think of our website now, one of the big concerns we have is your buttons, the round buttons. So, for staff, we're, student, they're all like way down. So, if you don't scroll down, you can't, like, where are they? So, that's happening a lot, and that's really a lot of feedback. So, this improved design gives us more ability for buttons up top, like where you're seeing them, and on your mobile device, you can see them more accurately. Did I explain that clearly?
Sort of, because it will still change for the mobile device.
But it'll change, okay, go ahead and explain that.
When we move to a mobile device, we will still lose some of those buttons. Right now, that was a big concern with, with parents, is that when you look at our desktop design, there are buttons along the bottom under the slideshow. When you move to a mobile device, those buttons pretty much disappear unless you're going to a full screen. So, with a new design, we would try to put those buttons and links. They still can't be quite where they are. That's just the nature of moving from the desktop to the mobile. But a global icon, like a global menu, like the hamburger menu, and you can find everything right there.
So, she's saying hamburgers, like those three lines, and you just click on that, and they're all there. So, that's why we are recommending it, because we do feel it's very important, and we also feel that it's not something that we're going to be able to change at another time. And we have heard negative feedback about our website and the ability for people to find things. So, we think it is very important, as I said, to our users. So, we'll open up to any questions.
Any, any, any questions from the board? Thank you, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't realize we were going to have a presentation, or I wouldn't have tried to rush. We do have a motion and a second, I believe. Is that correct? Thank you. Any further discussion? Nays or abstentions? Motion carries. And now, we come to another item of business that we have discussed about before, and that's two new steamers for Southern Middle School to be funded by the Food Service Fund and a cost of $49,800 using CoStarz. So, I would make a motion, two-part motion, to approve, one, the purchase and replacement of two steamers in the Southern Middle School cafeteria to be funded by the Food Service Fund, and the purchase would be from 11400 Incorporated at a cost of $49,800 using the CoStarz contract. And the second part is that we dispose of the two steamers that are being replaced. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Nays or abstentions? That motion carries. And item- And item 9.11 is an assessment appeal. Hopefully, people have gotten the opportunity to look at this. It's been going on for, I don't know how many years. This is related to the property with all the townhouses on the old Insulator property in New Freedom. And I guess County Board of Assessment Appeals approved a reduction in their assessment. And we're, by our policies and procedures, are obliged to analyze any assessment change of this value. Essentially, the assessment is changing from $7,138,800 down to $3,755,400, which makes a significant amount difference in the amount of tax that property will pay. So at this point, we're going to make a motion to ratify this, a decision to appeal the Board of Assessment Appeals' reduction of the assessment for the property located on Franklin Street in New Freedom. And the parcel number is there, anybody wants to look it up on the tax map. And I'm looking for a second to that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Green, maybe you can tell me exactly what the process will be if this motion is adopted.
So basically, because of timing from when we got the notice to the board meeting, I have actually signed off on it. The attorney said, I just need to bring it back and have it ratified. And what the, what you're ratifying is the ability for us to hold our right to appeal. So the next steps that are being taken is the attorneys are looking into whether or not they feel it is worth appealing based upon the facts. But you have a very short timeline to actually preserve your right to appeal, so we're moved forward with that. And again, they will only appeal if they think the district has a case in the appeal.
Thank you for that explanation. Any additional questions or comments on the motion?
And if I could add just one other point, just for the assessment, this is, would be a reduction of about $67,000 of tax revenue if it stands.
Okay, thank you. Are there any nays or abstentions? And all those, I guess that motion carries. I know of no other items of business for the Finance and Budget Committee. I'm going to report.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Personnel and Policy, Ms. Doleman, please.
Thank you, President Scheffner. Item 1001, Draft Meeting and Committee Dates. The Board of Education to receive draft meeting and committee dates to review, which they are attached, and I hope you reviewed them and put them on your calendar. Item number 1002, Job Descriptions for Gifted Support Instruction and College and Career Coordinator. Like to make a motion to approve the job descriptions for the gift support instruction and college and career coordinator. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Doleman. Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Hawley, please.
Okay, 11.01 is the Building and Grounds Report for October, which is for informational purposes. Are there any questions regarding the report? Moving on to 11.02, we have the Water Test Report for October for the groundwater sources at Friendship and the main campus here, and those tests all proved to be safe. So for the following, 1103 on through 1107, I believe it is, I'm going to ask for Randy to take over.
Thank you, Jim. 11.03, the High School Project Progress Report, Financial Report, and Timeline is, for your information, tonight, we saw the video that outlined, you know, the three phases of construction, obviously, new addition, complete, the, we're in the renovation phase and headed towards, you know, next summer, the bulk demo facade. One clarification that seems to continue to come up, that I just wanted to, you know, note, our completion is late fall of next year, so we'll actually be coming back to school before the project is completed. And there, I think the other clarification, there is an existing part of the building that's actually demolished, and the new front entrance goes into the gym lobby, the existing gym lobby. So just some questions that continue to come up and just trying to educate everybody on the project. Certainly, you know, the project's going well, but certainly have challenges with, you know, asbestos, but, you know, we're continuing to move forward. If there's any, no questions with that, I'll move on to 11.04. Capital Reserve Projects. At the Buildings and Grounds meeting, we discussed these projects that it asked tonight for the motion to transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund for the capital projects of $240,000 as listed.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Capital Reserve Projects and associated transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund for capital projects of $240,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any questions?
I do have a question. In relation to Mr. Hare's comment at the budget meeting two days ago, he was referring to the improvements that need to happen on the baseball field. And I know that we haven't discussed that at this point, but is there going to be something coming up soon to add to the Capital Reserve Projects in reference to that? Because it sounds like it's pre-budget.
So I can take that, like, so I met with Mr. Hare on October 26th and when we chatted, the one thing we also, he's a volunteer coach for us, so we also need to work with our athletic director and our coaching staff to talk about that. We have meetings set in place, so we're working through that right now. And I let him know when I met with him on the 26th that I will be getting back to him in early December to kind of talk about what our next steps are. So that was kind of the timeline we put into place. So yeah, we are definitely looking at it and we have several meetings on the calendar to work through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear any nays or exemptions? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you. 11.05, change orders are listed there, I have four listed. These were all approved onsite by me to keep the project moving. They're related in the fact that all four of these, the designers should have included something on the prints for, during bid day or for the bid. So you will note that the architect will reimburse the district for 15% of the cost of each of these change orders. GC34 deals with some steel needed for some duck openings in Area F renovated section. GC35, add of a concrete pad in the shop areas. GC36 is, instead of a masonry linte, the need for a steel linte because of the size of the window, or windows. And then PC14 is for mixing valves that are needed and were not included on the original design. So these are for your information. 11.06, advertisement for, I'm sorry. Yes, 11.06, I would ask the board to consider advertising for bids for the second phase of custodial equipment. You may recall, the first phase, we bought approximately $100,000 worth of custodial equipment. I worked with the custodial, head custodians and custodial staff to see, you know, what other pieces of equipment would help their job and help the efforts that we are putting forward. We're looking to utilize grant funding for this. Some of those pieces of equipment would include additional mini scrubbers, additional vacuums, wet vacs, floor machines, and a microfiber cleaning system that would allow desktops and floors to be cleaned more efficiently. So I'd ask for the board's consideration.
Okay, I'll make a motion to advertise for bids for the second phase of custodial equipment to be funded through the ARP-ESER grant up to $100,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Randy? Hearing none, are there any nays or exemptions? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you. 11.07, Removal Purchase and Installation of the Main Campus Entrance Sign. We've been working on this for over a year, working through with permitting and, you know, just seeking vendors, bringing out, you know, we actually had a digital sign brought out to campus to demonstrate it and make sure, you know, communication could happen with this sign. But asking, you know, in the Capital Reserve Fund, we had set aside $50,000 budget, and we're asking to purchase a digital sign for the front entrance. The brick pillars that are there now, the structure would stay, the sign that's there would be removed, and the digital sign would be in its place. So I'd ask for the board's consideration.
Okay, I'll make a motion to award the proposal for the removal, purchase, and installation of a main campus entrance sign at the front entrance of Southern York County School District for a cost of $39,126 to Daktronics, Inc. of Brookings, South Dakota. H&amp;M Signs of Lithican/Maryland through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract. This project is in the Capital Reserve Fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regarding the motion?
Yeah, I'm just, I should know this, but which entrance are we defining as the main entrance?
This church road.
With the little schoolhouse.
Well, they're both on this.
Oh, that's right.
One across from the barn.
Where the sign is now. Where the sign is now, yeah. Thanks, Bobby.
I would like to add, just for the public's sake, that the sign rendering is something that we've been able to see and it is electronic, and it also has an additional benefit for safety and messaging to the public, so it is going to go in between those two masonry pillows, pillars, just like our sign now has. It's just going to be electronic. So I don't know if any of you have been to Kennerdale or Spring Grove, they have an electronic sign. It's pretty nice, so.
Thank you. Hearing, are there any nays, or did I say that? Any nays or exemptions? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you. One of the things, since we're working with the contractors and the design team and things, there's an opportunity actually to turn over a section of the building over six months early. So we're looking to do that, it's a, for anybody that's familiar with the building, it was the science wing, and there's eight classrooms that are in that wing, but we have the opportunity to turn this section of the building over near the end of December. And part of that would be, you know, we looked at different options, whether we would put existing furniture back in those classrooms, or, you know, would we look to install or have installed the new furniture along with those classrooms. We looked at, you know, several options, whether using our staff, the district staff, or having the contractor. There is some extra cost if we use the contractor for, you know, extra mobilization as well as some warehousing and things that they would need to do, because initially, they were intending to deliver this, deliver these items and set them up next summer. We would recommend the cost of $1,200. We see a real advantage to getting students in the classrooms and having them set up in their permanent, with their permanent furniture. So we'd ask the board to consider.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve an additional cost of $1,200 for early delivery of furniture to the Susquehannock High School project due to classrooms being completed ahead of schedule. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Are there any questions?
I just have a couple of clarifications. I certainly don't mind the early delivery of the new furniture, but I, it does make me wonder, what's going to happen with the old furniture? What are we doing with all of those pieces of additional furnitures?
Yeah, existing furniture was evaluated, you know, and we're keeping some of it. Some of it, you know, is not in great shape, you know, so some of it would be disposed, you know, but, yeah.
I wondered, you know, if it would go to someone that might need it, you know, if there's any organizations out there that might have a need for that furniture, you know, homeschool groups and things like that.
Yeah, and one of the things when we were going through the furniture budget, we actually went desk by desk and teacher desk by teacher desk to determine whether or not it was able to be kept. We did keep, we could get the exact number, but we did keep quite a few teacher desks and quite a few student desks. We do feel that those that we're not keeping really aren't, wouldn't be good to even have other folks use.
Sure, just worn out.
They're really not of that condition. But as we went through the furniture budget, you know, we started with, we started at a point where we were replacing most of it, and as we worked through, then we, like I said, we went classroom by classroom. Huge thank you to Dr. Mullen and the teachers of the high school to actually go through that evaluation of each piece.
Okay, thank you.
Merely, Dr. Repert and I actually selected some of the older desks because the backs were sprung from the desk, as you say, so that's why I was laughing. So now we're stuck in all-new desks and sometimes it is stuff.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Any nays or exemptions? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the final, 11.09 is Use of Facilities Report for your information. And that ends my report on Buildings and Grounds, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Transportation, Health, and Safety, Ms. Samantha Hall, please.
Thank you. Item 12.01, Student Transportation Report for October. So despite a national bus driver shortage, First Student continues their recruitment efforts in very creative ways, including participation in local community Halloween parades. Drivers volunteered their time by decorating a bus and passing out treats to children in the Dallas Town and Red Lion areas. They also took the opportunity to hand out business cards and discuss employment opportunities with residents in each area. I'm also happy to share that while not the primary goal, First Student was awarded first place in decorations for the school bus category. As far as recognitions, during the month of October, we recognized two of our Friendship Elementary School drivers for their service. The drivers for Bus 7 and Bus 23 have both been supporting our community through school transportation for seven years. During the School Bus Safety Awareness Week in October, the district showed appreciation by providing each driver and First Student supporting staff with, thanks a latte, goody bags, thanking them for keeping our students safe. And with a continued focus on communication, the October 18th Warrior Insight included safety goals for parents to review with their children and a link to a coloring sheet that students could color and share with their bus driver during School Bus Safety Week. As far as an update for the stop-arm cameras, since the last reported period, there were 12 reported stop-arm violations. Of those violations, one was caught on camera, three were captured by driver observation. For the year so far, we've had 32 stop-arm camera violations. We ended We ended October with zero collisions and this concludes my transportation report and there's no other items of business.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Athletics and extracurricular, Ms. Jarvis, please.
Thank you, President Schefter. Warriors had another strong fall season and they're gearing up for winter sports. Field hockey ended their regular season, the Y A I double A Division Two champions, remaining undefeated, as well as placing second in the Y A I double A Championship Tournament and qualifying for the P I double A District Three Championships. Huge shout-out to Lily Wojcik for being named the Y A I double A Division Two Field Hockey Player of the Year. Special congratulations to Field Hockey All-Stars Danielle Labrie, Brooke Shabdak, Rowan Soroka, Rachel Stipler, and Kara Zabick. Warrior Boys Cross Country concluded the season as the Y A I double A Division Two runner-up and the girls' team ended in third place with both teams qualifying for the P I double A District Three Team Cross Country Championships. The Warrior Girls Volleyball Team finished the season Y A I double A Division Two runner-up with a record of 10-7 overall. The Warriors qualified the P I double A District Three Championships and special recognition to the Y A I double A Volleyball All-Stars Amanda Diggs, Anna Marie Petra Cevic, and Liliana Sanchez Martinez. Warrior Boys Soccer ranked third in the Y A I double A Division Two, qualifying for the P I double A District Three Championships. Y A I double A Boys Soccer All-Stars are Carlos Stilts, Braden Moore, Mamadou Ndaye, and Cooper Sistrunk. Girls Soccer Team finished as Y A I double A Division Two champions, also qualifying for the P I double A District Three Championships. In addition, the team won the Y A I double A Division Two Sportsmanship Award and Coach Foma Fanley was chosen as Y A I double A Division Two Girls Soccer Coach of the Year. Special recognition to Girls Soccer Y A I double A All-Stars Madeline Bartlett, Neve Fanning, Elena Snyder, and Emily Walker. Warrior Boys Soccer finished third in the Y A I double A Division Two with a record of 10-7-1. The Warriors qualified for the P I double A District Three Championships and the Y A I double A All-Stars are Carlos Stilts, Cooper Sistrunk, Braden Moore, and, oh, I already said that. Well, again, good job, guys, and also Mamadou Ndaye. Our Warrior Football Team finished the regular season in fourth place in Y A I double A Division Two. Recognition to the Y A I double A Football All-Stars Michael Fox, Donovan Jordan Brown, Danielle Calzac, Kane Lampkin, Ben Lippi, Owen McFadden, Josh Pacunas, and Dawson Zorba. And our Warrior Golfers took to the green earning a Y A I double A Division Two Sportsmanship Award as well. And for the third time, let's just go ahead and thank the Susquehannock Marching Band for winning first place with a score of 94.75 in the Liberty Division Open Class and the band also won for the Best Percussion. Congratulations to the band members and our band director, Chris Poole, and to the many parents who helped by schlepping very large sets to and from the field. Winter sports will be gearing up soon, which will bring the added bonus of staying warm in the gym or at the YMCA pool. And according to our school calendar, boys' basketball tips off Sunday, December 2nd at 10:00 a.m. at home against York Catholic. Swim team's opening meet is December 7th at 6:00 p.m. at Southwestern and wrestling takes to the mat December 14th at 7:00 p.m. at West York. That concludes my report, President Schefter.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. Moving on to reports of representative appointments, Legislative Council, back to Ms. Jarvis and Ms. Merrily Hall, please.
No report tonight.
Yes, thank you. So in the legislative report, Senator Kristen Phillips-Hills Bill eighty-four was signed into law repealing Section 1112 of the school code prohibiting teachers and other professional school employees from wearing religious dress, marked scarves, emblems, or insignia while performing their school duties. This section of law prohibiting this kind of attire was found to be not compliant with the 2003 Federal Court decision regarding free exercise of religion and free speech clauses of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. Also, Representative Monroe's House Bill 1094 was signed into law. This allows children from active-duty military families to enroll in a school district before establishing residency in Pennsylvania. So this provides an additional 45 days of flexibility for families after the arrival date specified on their military orders. Also, on Saturday, November 4th, I was able to represent our school district in person at the Delegate Assembly at P S B A Mechanicsburg. The 2024 legislative platform was adopted and will be used as the official record of position on legislative issues and a guide for the association's advocacy efforts for public schools statewide. A few updates of the platform to note and share. Under Section 2.5 Education-Related Mandates, there was a motion to strike COVID Measure Light Item K. This read, "In light of the COVID-19 pandemic, implement a moratorium on increases in brick and mortar and cyber charter school enrollment and costs." The measure was voted to strike, 158 yes, 17 no, and one abstention with the rationale that we are no longer engaged in a COVID-19 pandemic. Also, Section 2.5 Education-Related Mandates, there was a motion to add verbiage regarding payment to charter schools, which read, "An act legislation that would allow school districts to withhold payment to charter schools for such, for each student in absence of validated current residency within the district." This edition was voted in with a 169 yes and three no votes. The rationale was that public school districts throughout the state have been required to pay charter schools for students who do not reside within their district. This being unfair, moving forward, for future charter schools to receive payment, they will need to provide the public school with proof that the student that they're charging for does reside within the district. And the state and Senate, the state senate and house are now in recess and will reconvene December 11th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. York County School of Technology, Ms. Weaver Watts, please.
Just a few notes. On Thursday, November 2nd, York County School of Technology had their open house, so a lot of eighth graders were able to go in, attend. They could choose a tour guide or they can just kind of go through the school and look at the different areas of technology. It was a really great event. We even saw some Southern York County students, this is their home district, that are now attending York County School of Technology. They were some of the tour guides there, so it was really awesome to see some of them there as well as all the other eighth graders that were there and just looking at the different items of interest. So I do encourage anybody who is interested in York County School of Technology to get their application in. If you remember, last year they had to close the application process early, I think it was early in December, because they did receive so many applicants. Looking at the number of people that were at the open house, I do expect this to happen again, so if you are interested or your child is interested, I would definitely have them get their application in sooner than later. This weekend, the York County School of Technology is also hosting their fall play, the play that goes wrong. So after you finish watching Susquehannock High School's play, head up to York County or Southern, or York County School of Technology and watch their play. I'm sure it's going to be a fabulous one. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver Watts. LIU reports for your information, there's New York Adams Tax Bureau report, then we have the foundation, Mr. Bowman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was unable to attend the November meeting, but Ms. Hall did, so I'm going to defer to her.
Absolutely, I'll be happy to report. So we met at Friendship Library on November 7th and we learned about over 100 thank-you card contest entries were received and thank you to every student participating. The encouraging quotes from students of every age were amazing and scholarship sponsors no doubt will enjoy the artwork and the positive message about the district from these kids. And I have a paper I'll pass around to you with the contest winners of the cards and then there, there were more quotes from the kids, but there were some highlighted here on this page, so it might be fun to take a look at that. Also, January 5th, ChapterNet, S Y C S D Foundation, dollars for scholars, scholarships will be active and email notifications with application instructions will be sent to all seniors, parents, and guardians, so please take advantage of this wonderful opportunity for all kinds of financial assistance for higher education. And our next foundation meeting will be Tuesday, January 9th. Looking forward.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Under Secretary's Report, you have Student Activities Report for October, sixteen point zero two, Report of Resignations and Retirements. Additional Information Announcements, seventeen point zero one, you have your Home Education, Cyber Charter, Digital Academy, and LIU numbers for your information. Your seventeen point zero two, Messiah University School Counseling Intern, I'd like to welcome Laura Curl, Messiah University School Counseling Intern, placed with Matt Sherbington, School Counselor at Susquehannock High School during the spring 2024 semester. So welcome, welcome to Laura. For announcements, for my announcements, I just have that the board reorganizational meeting, followed by regular business of the Board of Education, will be held on Thursday, December 7th, 2023, here in the Southern Middle School Cafeteria, beginning at 7:00 p.m. Dr. Bryson.
Thank you, President Schefter. Here we go. I'll be as quick as I possibly can and my colleagues and friends around the table have already hit a lot of these, so that's the reason for my quickness. Dr. Repert already indicated, big kudos to both Michael Arnold at Southern Middle School and Brooke Luzinski at Southern Elementary School for becoming Shippensburg Teachers of the Year. If my records are right, Dr. Repert, that's somewhere close to 20 teachers that, or administrators that are actively representing our school district that are still here with us, that have been at some point awarded Shippensburg Study Council Award winner. So awesome. Also wanted to highlight Jack Smith. He's humble, but when I started my first year as an administrator in 1999, which I think is
Same year.
The very same year. Jack was one of the first to come over, meet me on the field because at that point I was in Brad Keeney's position as Athletic Director and to this day, Jack Smith is one of our leaders with athletic event staff out there on the field. So thank you, Jack, for, for being here and helping our kids still to this day. And speaking of Jack, our elementary schools recognize veterans, specifically I'll highlight Southern Elementary School. It does an awesome event where veterans are invited in for the morning, they read to our kids, they get a nice breakfast and we all share a laugh, especially if I'm sitting next to Jack because he's usually here. So thank you to all the veterans for coming in and thank you to our elementary students that made that a special event for, for all of our veterans. Another giving back event, I wanted to recognize Coats of Friendship, which again this year sponsor, is, is our students who sponsored a coat giveaway event and they've been doing so annually for a multitude of years now. I actually took my son on last Saturday morning and went to Lutheran Church in York City and what a special moment. I think over the course of a couple hours, they gave out over 2,300 jackets as well as other gloves and et cetera for the winter season. So great opportunity for, for our kids to give back and those kids are also leaders in my eyes for promoting the idea of giving and you get as much when you're giving as those that are getting. So thank you to them. Band's been represented multitude of times, three years running, you all got that already, but kudos to the kids. In addition, I want to just highlight Trevor Carrington and Dr. Hughes, who both helped support getting the $15,000 grant for Farm to School. We now have the equipment, or eventually we'll have the equipment. Next is the curriculum to support that, to begin to, to take a look at hydroponic growing pretty much K through 12, so should be an exciting project for our science teachers that actually does meet in and fit with the, the new standards. Ongoing effort to give back in addition to those that I've already indicated, Southern York County School Districts will be participating in York County Food Bank once again, providing holiday meal boxes to local families in need. For those interested in sharing food or monetary donations and volunteering or who are in need of support themselves, please do not hesitate us. If you contact the district number, they can reach my secretary or anybody in the front office can help support the York County Food Bank. And we're also doing an elves project as well, I think, where many of our employees combine together and create holiday boxes that might include clothing, food, toys, et cetera, because I just got the Google Sheet today to sign up, so I thought I'd bring that up. But anybody interested, contact our main number and we'll get you in contact with the And lastly, but not least, remember this weekend, get out and see the play, mentioned multitude of times as well, they always do an outstanding job and you also get a, maybe a first glimpse at the updated auditorium. Thank you, everybody, and have a great day.
Thank you, Dr. Bryson. Any new business from any board member? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.